Wait one more minute and then we'll get started.
That sounds good, Tim.
Okay, it's five minutes, it's eleven minutes after five. We're gonna call the meeting order, begin with a pledge of the flag, followed by a moment of silence, please.
Mr. Chairman, Bobby.
Thank you, Bobby. I pleasantly just do flag. Moment of silence, please. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith? Mr. Haug?
Here.
Ms. Haug?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel? Ms. Radel?
Andrew, your microphone is muted.
Here.
Ms. Edman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban? Mr. Urban? Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. Griffith? Mr. Urban? And Mr. McGinley?
Present. Thank you. We have a motion to suspend bylaws regarding the requirement a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting.
So moved. Linda, second vote.
And Mr. Vog. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public beings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion? Ms. Edman, we have a second? Second?
Second, Kendra.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carried.
Walter.
Walter?
Yep.
Okay. You in opposition or abstention?
Opposition.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I didn't see a sign on him.
Yeah, I, I just got in.
Okay. Fine. You didn't miss anything, we're just getting started.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh, we have a proposed ordinance amending the capital plan budget for Luzerne County. Remember some of the discussion from last time. Uh, there were some monies that were available, uh, to the county due to the cyber attack that happened in May of 2019. Uh, four hundred, almost $465,000. And this motion, this ordinance would put this money into the capital plan. We're open now for public comment, please. Anyone for the public who would like to speak in regards to this particular proposed ordinance? One more time, anyone from the public who would like to speak in regard to this ordinance that would take the money that came as a result of the insurance claim for the cyber attack in 2019? The team that came to the county, almost $465,000. This would put that money in the capital plan. Once again, anyone from the public who would like to speak to that? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Walter.
Present.
Okay.
Second. Schnee.
Mr. Griffith and Mrs. Schnee, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition, any abstention? None heard, motion carries. Uh, the next public hearing will be in four minutes at 5:20, and we'll wait until 5:20 to call that to order, please. Thank you. Okay, it's now 5:20, we'll call the meeting order. We've already done the pledge in a moment of silence. Ms. Lawrence, roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haug?
Here.
Ms. Haug?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
You're muted, Mr. Perry.
Right, here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Edman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban? Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Ten of eleven, present.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. We have a motion, Ms. Haug?
So moved.
We have a second for Ms. Haug?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. We have a motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of the public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
Present.
Mrs. Schnee, and who was second?
Sheila. Ms. Edman.
Ms. Edman, thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No, Walter.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. The second public hearing this evening in regard to the ordinance that's being presented. This would provide for the opportunity, this money is money that, uh, a little bit over $2 million. Just so everybody's correct, we received the CARES funding. Uh, much of that funding was distributed to different segments of the community, small businesses, private nonprofits, et cetera. But there was some money that was available to the county. And after all the requests were taken care of, there was some money that would, could reimburse salaries that were as a result of the COVID expenses. So technically, this money, this $2 million, almost $50,000, is money that was available in the general fund because the CARES money reimbursed those salaries that were eligible under the CARES, uh, under the CARES Act, I should say. So we're now open for members of the public. Would like to comment in regards to this proposed amendment to the... Any members of the public would like to speak to the proposed budget amendment, budget amendment regarding the money that is used to reimburse, uh, salaries? And the general fund money would be the money that would be available to go into the county reserve fund. Hearing none, we have a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Leanne.
Leanne?
Second, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. We have a third public hearing that will be called to order at 5:30, so we have approximately six minutes until that public hearing is called to order. Thank you. Okay, it's now 5:30. We'll call the meeting order. We have already done a pledge in a moment of silence. Ms. Lawrence, roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith? Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
Here.
Ms. Haug?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Edman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban? Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present. Thank you.
Ten of eleven.
Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Haug, you make that motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second for Ms. Haug?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions? None heard, motion carry. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Kendra.
Ms. Radel, do we have a second for Ms. Radel?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
Yes, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Now, this is a proposed bonus ordinance that will amend the 2020 budget. And the monies involved here come as a result of the purchase of the voting machines that happened at the end of 2019. Uh, there was money that became available from the federal and state government to reimburse the county for part of those expenses. The money that was available from those two sources was $2,38,405. Uh, this motion would pay down the debt from 2019 at the total amount of the $2,38,405. We're now open for members of the public.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with regards to the, the monies that have been, uh, that have been, uh, you know, is this going to be for the... Excuse me, is this going to be for the, uh, for the IT from the, um, from the reimbursement, uh, for the, for the, uh, for the cyber? Uh, is this, is this what the, uh, monies is for, coming from, for the...
Mr. Raybo? Uh, that was the very first public hearing. This pub, this one is based on the reimbursement from the state and federal government for the purchase of the voting machines.
Oh, okay, for the voting machines. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I will address that then. Thank you for clarifying. Um, first of all, for the voting machines, if you recall, Mr. Chairman, the governor issued a press release directive, not an executive order, in conforming with, uh, state, uh, the state statutes and the state constitution, because the General Assembly would have to have been in recess in order for that, uh, edict or that press release directive to be an actual executive order. And I don't think that, that, uh, the machines, the voting machines, in terms of, uh, the mandate by the governor, had any legal standing, and I believe that CCAP actually validated what I'm, what I'm saying right now. So therefore, I think that the state should pay the total amount for the voting machines, not just a portion of it, as, uh, it would normally be, because the General Assembly never authorized for, uh, the counties to have to purchase new voting machines according to what Governor Wolf issued in his press release directive. So therefore, I think the county should, uh, should, uh, should send a bill for the total amount for the voting machines, not just the portion. That's been my opinion since the very beginning of the press release directive by Governor Wolf, and it remains so, uh, now. So I think that the council, uh, should direct the manager to ask for the total amount for the voting machines, not just a portion. Thank you.
Anyone else from the members of the public? Anyone from the public who would like to speak in regard to this proposed ordinance? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Kendra.
Hold it, Mr. Manta, hold it. I'm, I'd like to comment on the voting machine. I'm sorry, I couldn't get my phone off of mute.
Mr. Manta?
Yes.
Please be prompt, uh, wherever you can.
Yeah, I, I couldn't...
You got a couple of minutes, go ahead.
I couldn't get my, my phone to get off of mute.
Okay, go ahead.
The opinion on mine is that if the, the governor made a mandate for those machines, I think the governor should have the total amount of the money for those crooked machines, for the machines that were, were illegitimate and, and they had so many problems with them, and I don't think we should even use those voting machines for the next upcoming election. I think we should just go back to paper and pencil, because that's gonna be the, the most honest way to do it. So the money should be taken, the money should be reimbursed for the total amount of the voting machines, because we really didn't need the machines. It was a burden put on this county by the Governor Wolf. So I agree with Mr. Raybo. Thank you very much for my couple of minutes.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? If not, can we have a motion for adjournment now?
So moved, Chris.
Mr. Perry? Do we have a second for me?
Second.
Mr. Schnee, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. We have a fourth public hearing scheduled for three more minutes at 5:40. We'll wait until that time to have that hearing. Thank you. Okay, it's now 5:40, we'll call the meeting to order. We've done the pledge in a moment of silence earlier. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haug?
Here.
Ms. Haug?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Edman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban? Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present. Thank you.
10 of 11.
Very good. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Houck, do you make that motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second, Kendra.
Second. Ms. Radel, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Saban, do we have a second?
Second, Chris.
And Kendra.
Second, Mr. Perry, I believe. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
Mr. Griffith, no.
Mr. Griffith, any abstentions? None heard. Okay, motion carries. This is a proposed ordinance amending the 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzern County. If you remember the last time we met, two weeks ago, Mr. Riley indicated that the county was receiving almost $9.5 million from the Department of Treasury for Emergency Assistance Rental Program. This would allow us to access that money through the US Department of Treasury. It would be an amendment to the 2021 budget. Members of the public who would like to speak in that regard?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Ms. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I stated during public comment at the last meeting regarding this subject, I truly believe that since our, and I'm not saying that the townships or boroughs because the counties are, the county is responsible for the boroughs and townships in terms of the, for the Office of Community and Economic Development. But I believe that because this is a pandemic of epic proportions and has this has affected this, the county, all the municipalities of this county beyond what we ever imagined, I truly believe that, I hope that there, the Treasury Department, and if Mr. Riley can contact the Treasury Department for the CARES Act or whoever's responsible for the CARES Act money, that the cities should also be allowed to apply in terms of the residents of the cities for rental assistance. I can't begin to, to tell you, Mr. Chairman and members of council, how people have been like so impacted by this in terms of their, of their living, you know, in terms of how are they going to stay in their homes for the next week or few weeks until the next month. So I plead with you on behalf of all the cities and city residents of all four cities in our county that they should be allowed to apply for this relief through the CARES Act funding through the Office of Community and Economic Development, and I hope that you, Mr. Chair, and the members of council would ask Mr. Riley to advertise accordingly for the city residents of the four cities, that they would be able to be notified that they could apply for this relief. Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else from the public, please?
Mr. Manta?
Go ahead, Ms. Manta.
Yeah, that, that, the care, the money that, that he was talking about, that the CARES money for relief for people, so, so in effect, why don't they just hang on to the money and put it in a fund where the people wouldn't have to pay so much on property tax? And that would be in there as a cushion or tax time when everybody says they can't give the people a break on their taxes. They can't give them 10% on rebate on their taxes. So, so why don't they just leave that money in there for that, for that purpose? Thank you very much. I'll listen to the comments.
Other members of the public?
Yeah, they, the, if I friggin' public media.
Other members of the public? If not, we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second?
Second, Perry.
Mr. Perry, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. And we have one more public hearing that will commence at 5:54 minutes from now. Thank you.
Hi, Jeremy. What's up? Yeah?
We can hear somebody on another phone.
Okay.
Maybe he can, could you mute yourself so that we won't hear your conversation?
I muted the number, but someone hit mute all. That is a panelist. Mute all will mute every phone number in Teams, and I can't unmute anyone, so star six whenever it's public comment. Thanks.
Okay, it's now 5:50. So we'll call the meeting to order. We've already done a pledge in a moment of silence. Ms. Lawrence, would you roll call, please?
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Perry, you're muted.
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban? Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McInley?
Present.
10 of 11.
Thank you. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Houck, do you make that motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second, Sheila.
Ms. Saban, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Leanne.
So moved.
Leanne was first on that. Ms. Saban, you're second?
Yes.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
Yes, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, any abstentions? Motion carries. The public hearing is regards to amending of the Administrative Code, section 2.10, which regards to the Luzern County Authority Boards and Commissions. This is a result of a amendment proposed by Mr. Griffith. And it is in regards to type of compensation that people would receive if they served, and this would prohibit compensation of any type in regards to those members. Now open to the members of the public, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Ms. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As someone, a member of the public and someone who also serves on a county authority, I would agree with this ordinance, in so long as it's in compliance with the statutes pertaining to the respective authorities, boards, and commissions. What I mean by that is, as long as it complements the municipal, State Municipal Authorities Act, the urban redevelopment law, which governs the redevelopment authorities, the transportation authorities, or, excuse me, the Industrial Development Authorities Act, and so on and so forth. I say this, Mr. Chairman, because we don't want to get into, the council, I don't believe, wants to get into the weeds when it comes to creating an ordinance that might get into a, a protracted, you know, you know, like confusion or even a conflict between the authorities and the county. I think that what needs to happen is there should be, each board, each authority should go to the county, come to the, in front of the county and say if they are giving a perk or any other type of compensation, and if they are, then that needs to be addressed between the county and that authority hashed out between the county and the authority. But if they're not, like the redevelopment authority is not, because the ordinance that creates the authority by the commissioners at the time prohibited for perks or compensation. So I think this might be a little, how shall we say, redundant. So I, I would like to see if, what the authority, respective authorities, boards, and commissions have to say first before, you know, I, I agree wholeheartedly with the ordinance that Mr. Griffith is proposing. I think that the details need to be hashed out before the voting can, you know, to, to adopt this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Other members of the public? Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn.
Excuse me?
Mr. Manta?
Go ahead, Ms. Manta.
Okay, I have to agree with, with, with Mr. Raybo. Because of the fact that if one entity is giving a perk for, for the people that sit on the board, well, you know, like when I was in the army, everybody does la di da di, everybody, or nobody. And, and this should be, this should be hashed out before the people are put on the board, and, and I think that this is a little bit, the, the, the horse already left the barn, and they're trying to put the harness on him. This should have never been in the beginning because of the fact that they have so many people on these boards, and that's the reason they, they want to get on the board is because they have life insurance. Hey, you're going to pay for my life insurance the rest of my life? That'd be fine and dandy. That's a, a, a deal for me. But then the other people on other boards, they don't get anything. So, I mean, let's make it fair for everybody instead of trying to put something across that is really not fair with anybody. All right, thank you very much.
Any other members of the public? If not, we have a motion to adjournment. Mr. Schnee, did you make that motion?
Present. Yes, present.
Do we have a second? We have a second. Matt Vogel, thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. We will commence the voting session at 6:01. Thank you.